I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll start with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First item on the agenda is to appoint the 2015 Board Chair. I will open for nominations. I nominate Lance Granzo, Chairperson for 2015-16.
My second.
Okay.
All in favor?
No, I was thinking if I wanted to cease nominations and just go with that, but we won't be so formal. Okay? Are there any other nominations? Okay, if not, I'll close that. And we'll vote on it. All those in favor of Lance Granzo being the Board Chair for 2015, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. There you are, sir.
Next on the agenda, thank you. Next on the agenda is the appointment for the Vice Chair. I'll ask for a motion on that.
I would nominate Ron Rickles to be the Vice Chair for 2015.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is the approval of the agenda as posted.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is approval of the minutes of the December 30th meeting.
I'll move to approve the minutes, December 13th. Or 30th, I'm sorry.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is approved January 2nd claims for payment.
I'll make a motion to approve claims for payment.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, next we have is... The Board represent Hearn County on the following boards. There's a list of about 20 boards. Do we want to go through them individually, or can we go as printed? I'll leave that to you guys.
I think just I would make a motion to approve them as listed.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded.
Okay, I don't have who's on each one. Can you read them?
Yes, we can.
I'll go ahead. I'll go ahead. Emergency Management is Renee. Hearn County Solid Waste is Lance. The Alternate is Ron. Satushi is Renee. Workforce Development is Lance. Mid-Iowa Community Action is Ron. Region 6 is Lance. Second Judicial is Ron. Second Alternate is Renee. Hurtland is Lance. Alternate is Jessica Laura. Juvenile Detention is Lance. Alternate is Ron. Northeast Iowa Response is Renee. Alternate is Lyle Jeski. Firemen's is Renee. Alternate is Lance. Cherokee does not exist. Nope. Um, HC CDC is Renee. The Alternate is Ron. EMS Counsel, Renee. E-911 Board Rep is Renee. Alternate is Lance. Board of Health is Renee. Decat is Ron. Access is Ron. Senior Issues is Renee. Alternate is Ron. Enterprise Zone is Lance. Green Belt is Renee. Uh, Green Belt Alternate is Lance. That multi-county HIPAA, I have not available. The next one is Central I... One to be added is Central Iowa Community Service, which is Ron, and Lance is the Alternate. And Central Iowa Case Management is Ron. Did I speak too fast?
All right, thanks.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is authorizing attendance by county employees to meetings set up by the State of Iowa Association, ISAC, for the year 2015. And that expenses that those attending be paid by the county. The courthouse shall remain open on the day of the meetings. Do I hear a motion on that?
I will make a motion to authorize county employees to attend the meetings, the ISAC meetings, and have their expenses paid by the county. Um, and that the courthouse will be open on those days.
And I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is setting the holidays for 2015, which is what I have written down as President's Day, February 16th. Memorial Day, May 25th. Independence Day, July 3rd. Labor Day, September 7th. Veterans Day, November 11th. Thanksgiving, November 26th and 27th. Christmas, 24th and 25th. And New Year's Day of 2016.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2015 holidays as stated.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the legal newspapers. I didn't bring them down, but we did have their apps put in for the Eldora Newspaper, Al Fos Time Citizen, and the Actley World Journal.
I would move to name the three newspapers that you just stated as the legal newspapers for Hearn County for 2015.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is an appointment to the Conservation Board. We have one person going off this year, which is... He's not going off. His term is up this year. He is eligible for another term.
Right.
And we had another applicant bring in. So we have an Al Kadoff and a Claude Sears.
I'll make a motion to approve... Oh, excuse me, to appoint Alan Kadoff to the County Conservation Board.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, appoint Alan Kadoff. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is the County Board of Health. And we have two openings there. We have one named Phil. We'll have to leave the other one vacant until we find the next one.
Um, I contacted Diane Meyer, and she is interested in sitting on the Board of Health. So I would make the motion to appoint Diane Meyer to the Board of Health. And I guess we still search for the second.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, appoint Diane Meyer. Any discussion? Justin, if you want to throw something out there in the paper, looking for somebody, that'd be great. Hearing no other discussion. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Justin. Next is the appointments to MHDD Advisory Board, which we have four names on, Mary, Rick, Cheryl, and Sherry. Mary Rosendall, Rick Shaw, Sherry... Cheryl Tanis and Sherry Manning. And they've all turned their applications in.
So I'll make a motion to appoint to the Mental Health Advisory Board, Rick Shaw, Mary Rosendall, Sherry Manning, and Cheryl Tanis.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Oh, aye. Sorry, I missed that.
Is that for yes or no?
It's yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Uh, next is the Board of Con... condemnation. I have a hard time pronouncing that word. For the term of one year commencing January 1st, 2015. This is a list of farmers, real estate, property owners, and business people. You have a list of those with one vacancy on the farmers.
Yeah, I don't... You don't have it on yours, but I'll write it.
Okay. Do you want me to name all those people?
Yes.
Ever harm... For farmers, ever harms, John Kicks, Bill Lawless, Paul Primus, Don Hauser, Neil Hadley, and Brian Lauterbach. Real Estate, Ed Bear, Brad Figellin, Mike Nestle, Carl Stevens, Gene Sealman, Philip Brinkmeyer, and Marilyn Reynertson. Property Owners, Steve Manater, Harvey Mueller, Scott Williams, Kenny Budd, Joe White, Charlene Shore, Robert Fuller, Sr. Business People, Dale Mars... Martenson, Judy Barheit, John Zosky, Gene Mueller, Roseanne Primus, Greg Salvo, and Leon Herden. Motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion to approve the individuals that you just read to the Hearn County Board of Condemnation.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. You didn't want to repeat all those.
No.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next... Next is approval appointments of the Regional Revolving Loan Fund. Those two people that have been on there are Cindy Litwiler and Larry Wolf. I have not heard that they don't... That they want off, so I would ask that they be reappointed.
I will make the motion that Cindy Litwiler and Larry Wolf be reappointed to the Regional Revolving Loan Fund Committee.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is the approval of the Zoning Board of Adjustments. Roger Sutton is going off, and he was interested in another term.
I'll make a motion to appoint Roger Sutton to the Zoning Adjustment Board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is approval and appointments of our Historical Preservation Committee, which was Candy Wait, Dr. Pisney, and Deb Crosser. Deb asked to be taken off of there, leaving me two people.
I would make the motion to appoint Candy Wait and Dr. Pisney again to the Historic Preservation Commission. And another one that we need to fill a vacancy.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Justin, I'll ask you again. Thanks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is Pioneer Cemetery Commission. We have two people going off, George Butler and Bill Trampy, and both of them gave interest in being put back on again.
I'll make a...
Bill Trampy, Sr., excuse me.
Make a motion to reappoint George Butler and Bill Trampy, Sr. to the Pioneer Cemetery Commission.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Um, approval of the County Magistrate Commission, which was Dale's... Dale Martenson, Randy Jennings, and Craig Froning.
I will move to reappoint Dale Martenson, Randy Jennings, and Craig Froning to the County Magistrate Appointing Commission.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is the Weed Commissioner.
I'll make a motion to appoint Cory Engel as Weed Commissioner.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is the Prairie Rivers of Iowa Resource Conservation and Development Board.
And I will make a motion to appoint Eric Nielsen to that board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is the appointments of Donnell, Dave McDaniel, Jessica Laura, Michelle Ike, Marilyn Adams, Joe Donald, and Rick Dunn to the Personnel Handbook Committee.
I know we've discussed before about having all of the department heads included on that. I don't know, does this... I don't believe this includes all of them.
It'll leave out G.I.S., Roxanne, and IT. The IT guy over there.
So I guess...
We can appoint what we have and add if we need.
Okay, so then I'll make the motion to reappoint those listed to the Personnel Handbook Committee.
And I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, reappoint these names. Any discussion? We can add more at any time.
Okay.
Hearing any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Oh, next is a resolution of 2015-01, Construction Evaluation to be adopted, which is listed below. As per motion to adopt.
I would make the motion to approve Resolution Number 2015, the Construction Evaluation Resolution.
And I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye. Motion carries. Next. Catch up to my agenda here. Next is setting the Wednesdays... The date at Wednesday... Wednesdays at 10:00 a.m. as regular board meeting time for 2015, unless somebody's open to changing that time.
What to do on Wednesdays? We did. So I will make a motion to set the date for our regular board meetings Wednesday at... All Wednesdays at 10:00.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to set it at Wednesdays at 10:00 a.m.
Yes.
A.m. Hearing any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is Medical Examiner, which has been Dr. Bronkhorst for two years. His term is up, and it's time to reappoint again.
I'll make the motion to reappoint Dr. Bronkhorst as Medical Examiner.
I'll second.
He never told me he didn't want off.
Yeah.
I think he's trying to...
Final Dr. O'Loglin. Yeah. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Outside what we just had. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is the appointment of Dr. O'Loglin, who is the Assistant Medical Examiner for a two-year term.
I'll make the motion to approve or appoint Dr. O'Loglin.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Oh, next is the Medical Examiner Investigation Services, which has been Gerald Brown, Elizabeth Johnson, Marla Williams, and Roger Pickering. We had a question with Gerald Brown's that he hasn't turned his paperwork in from a year ago. Do we want to reappoint again, or leave him off this year until he turns his paperwork in?
The only thing I would say on that is that they usually divide it up geographically.
Okay.
And so he takes all the Southern Vernon County. So if you leave him off, which is fine, you have to make sure that one of them is willing to go to the Southern Vernon County to do it, because they're all northern.
So we want to leave him on?
I'm not telling them what to do. I'm just saying, I've understood in the past that they geographically divided it up.
Okay.
And Elizabeth routinely took north, Brown took south, and then Marla and Mr. Pickering did the anywhere in between, and one of them did, like, Actley. So...
Okay.
If we have a replacement, we can reappoint.
Yeah, I'm like, I don't really care, but I'm just stating that.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Gerald Brown, Elizabeth Johnson, Marla Williams, and Roger Pickering to medical examiner investigator.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I think I would just make sure that he understands by letter or something that the contract needs to be in our office and signed before he can accept any callouts and then accept payment for them. I would make sure a letter's sent to him, because we may get one last year. I don't want to go another year without... Yeah, I agree.
Okay. So the discussion is that he gets sent a letter before he can go out on a call? We need to have...
And I think we should put a due date on it, just to make sure we have it in our hands, because if not, then maybe his appointment shouldn't stand, and you should have the other three geographically reassigned what they do.
Okay. So I need a motion within the motion, set a due date?
I'm just... I'm just talking.
Um, that... That these four have a due date of responding back to us with a letter of accepting. Is that what you're asking for?
Well, they have a contract.
Or a contract.
The contract needs to be signed and in our office by a due date.
By the end of January.
And the other three have signed contracts already, correct?
I'm not sure. I don't know. It's a new year, so...
Then let's just...
They signed theirs last year.
Pending approval of the contract, or pending signing of the contract.
Yes, so let me see if I can word this. So we'll approve Joe Brown, Elizabeth Johnson, Marla Williams, Roger Pickering as medical examiner investigators in lieu of signing their contracts for this calendar year.
By what day?
By a month. Should... Yeah, let's come by the end of January, so by January 31st.
Is that amendment to your motion?
Can we just... Wouldn't that be an addition?
Well, you either got to kill one or amend it.
Okay, we can amend.
Move to amend.
Yeah, move to amend initial.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to amend a due date upon pending them signing their contract and getting it back to us by the end of the month. All in favor, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now, any more discussion on the four... Approving the four? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now, any more discussion on the four... Approving the four? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next we have is appointments to Township Trustees and Clerks for a four-year term commencing January 2nd, 2015. I have a list for Clay Township of Daryl Freese as trustee and Randy Kramer as clerk, Steve Ballvance as trustee in Eldora Township, Harris Haywood as clerk, Grant Township as Steve Manater as trustee, and Terry Freest as clerk, Harden Township of Brandon Piper... Peeper, and Carol Banner as clerk, Sherman is Jeff Drake as trustee, Levon Top as clerk. Tipton, I just have George Faust, the clerk, asked not to be put back on this year, so we have one opening for Township trustee in Tipton... Or Township Clerk in Tipton Township.
I would make a motion to appoint those you just listed as trustees and clerks for this... For a four-year term. And there would be another vacancy to fill for a Tipton Township Clerk.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is approval appointment of Norm Houston to the Pleasant Township Clerk. I believe Norm's been talked to. He currently went off, and the person declined that won the election, so we can put Norm back on again.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Norm Houston as Pleasant Township Clerk.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now I got to go to this agenda and catch up. Next on the agenda is a change of status in the Recorder's Office. I have two change of statuses. One is a discharge, and one is a hire.
Didn't we already do the discharge, Jane? No? Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the change of status for Jane Shaw discharge as of the... As of one... As of today, uh, January 2nd.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is a hire of Cheryl Lawrence as deputy recorder.
I'll make a... Go ahead, if you want.
I... I guess I would like to discuss this further with Lori concerning the salary. Just, I mean, I just saw this, you know, at the end of... Or a couple of days ago. And I just think it sends a bad message to employees to have an employee that's worked for the county for a number of years. And they leave employment, and then they are hired back at a higher rate than what they were paid when they left, along with the amount of vacation that they were also earning at that time. I just think it sends a bad message to employees. I guess, I mean, and I don't know what everybody else feels. My... My, um... Motion, I guess, I would make a motion to hire Cheryl Lawrence as a clerk for the time being, until we can have a chance to talk with Lori again. And, um... Just a short discussion we had regarding salary earlier. I guess I would like a little more discussion with... With the attorney, maybe the county attorney, or ISAC attorney regarding setting salaries. So I guess my motion would be to hire Cheryl Lawrence as a clerk in the Recorder's Office for the time being, and then put it on the agenda for Wednesday.
Pending salary.
Correct. Pending salary discussion.
So we'll have this back on the agenda then the following Wednesday?
That would be my recommendation.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Unfortunately, Lori can't be here today to answer these questions. But I have no problem putting her back on Wednesday's agenda. So we'll go ahead and put her on. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is change of status in the Attorney's Office, which I have Courtney Vincent.
I'll make a motion to approve the change of status in the County Attorney Department. This is a hire, Courtney Vincent, at $16.50 an hour. At 1650 an hour.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, hire Courtney Vincent at 1650 an hour, it's a permanent part-time position. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries. Next is Resolution Naming Depositories. Which is Resolution Number 2015 dash 02.
Okay, I know this comes from Michelle in the Treasurer's Office, and I will make the motion to approve Resolution Number 2015 dash 02, naming depositories. That's per Iowa Code Section 12C point 1.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Renee.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye, motion carries. Next is the investment policy. Which goes through the Treasurer's Office as well. Motion to approve.
And I'll make a motion to improve, to approve the investment policy for Hearn County.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Ineligibility Homestead Credits to be disallowed for 2015 payable '16 and '17.
Do you, do we do these individually, or as listed?
You can do as listed.
I'll make a motion to approve the Homestead Military Credits to be disallowed for 2015 payable '16 and '17.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Recorder's Monthly Report for the month of November.
I will make a motion to approve the Recorder's Report for the month of November.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Utility permit secondary roads, Daryl didn't have any. He gave an update on secondary roads two days ago. And next we have is equipment rental. He did not have the paperwork in yet, and he asked that, that be tabled till next Wednesday. Or be put on next Wednesday, I should say. And then all I got left is other business. Hearing none, I'll ask for a German.
So moved, moved to a German.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.